I just heard of anything that was paying a regular.
Right.
I was saying this.
Right.
Yeah, it's not very important to do what to.
Oh, right.
Right, so which is my.
Well, I got to see it.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah.
We go.
There we go.
Yeah, I had a couple. Oh, yeah. So this is a copy. Thank you. What, what? Oh, okay. Break up. Yeah. All right, well, I would share. Okay.
Welcome, everyone. The Trumbull County Commissioners are honored to hold their weekly meeting here at the fair. Welcome to the fair. If you would all please rise for the pleasure of ladies.
United States of America, in the great land of the nation.
Please remain standing or order. Thank you, everyone. Be seated. Okay, we'd like to make an announcement before we start. And tonight, our next workshop will be held on Tuesday, July 15th, at the Commissioners' Meeting Room. That's on the fifth floor. If you may all know where you go to get your titles done, if you don't know where the Commissioners' Office is. And then our next public meeting will be held the day after, on Wednesday, July 16th, at the Commissioners' Meeting Room. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll? Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here. Here.
Item number one, the two adopt the resolution recognizing the 2025 Trumbull County 4-H youth club members and adult volunteers. The Trumbull County 4-H program has 574 outstanding 4-H members, spending countless hours running their meetings, electing officers, voting on pertinent issues, and organizing their own fundraisers. The Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the achievements of the 4-H youth and the 101 trained adult volunteers who spend countless hours mentoring and educating these young adults. The Board of Commissioners urges all citizens of Trumbull County to support the efforts of these young people for the future of Trumbull County.
Pardon. Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernan.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to read the resolution, and then we'll have the 4-Hers come up, Ashley, Noel. Resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, in recognition of the 2025 Trumbull County 4-H youth members and adult volunteers. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the hard work and dedication of the 590 outstanding 4-H youth members of Trumbull County, Ohio. And whereas, the 4-H program provides a positive environment where youth from Trumbull County, Ohio can share the subject matter and skills that they have learned from their projects and demonstrate them during fair week. Thousands of people from the Honing Valley visit the fair to see these exhibits. And whereas, 4-H would not be possible without the 98 trained adult volunteers who spent countless hours mentoring, educating, listening, and guiding these fine young adults. These volunteers teach their individual 4-H members how to run their own meetings, elect officers, vote on all issues pertaining to the club, organize fundraisers, and how to balance the club's checking account. And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commends our 4-H participants for their time and dedication towards these projects and their participation in 25 traditional clubs. This year's national 4-H slogan is "Beyond Ready." And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners always wishes to say a special thank you to all staff and volunteers who worked so diligently in guidance and support to these youths. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners urges all citizens of Trumbull County to support the efforts of these young people who are the future of Trumbull County. Our children are one of our greatest assets and should be commended for the success they accomplish through the 4-H program. On behalf of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, we would like to present this proclamation. Please give a hand, round of applause. Okay, can we have another round of applause for the 4-Hers there who want to speak? And this is what the Commissioners want to know about the speaking, and Ashley.
Good morning, Trumbull County Commissioners, staff, and attendees. My name is Ashley Meredith, and I proudly serve as one of the 4-H educators here in Trumbull County. Our other 4-H and IED educator is Ms. Noel Barnes, and she is with our youth this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you a glimpse of the incredible impact 4-H has on the youth of our community. The 2025 National 4-H theme, "Beyond Ready," speaks to what 4-H strives to do every single day. Prepare young people not only for their future, but to be leaders, centers, and changemakers. As a 4-H alum myself, I can personally attest to the hands-on learning, leadership development, and character-building experiences this program provides. The core values I learn through 4-H, responsibility, service, public speaking, and goal setting, help shape the person I am today. Just as important were the mentors and role models who believed in me and the lifelong friendships I built along the way. Now approaching nine years in the role as a 4-H educator, I've had the privilege of watching our youth grow, many of them becoming leaders themselves, giving back by mentoring younger members, and serving as outstanding examples of what 4-H represents. The transformation is both inspiring and rewarding. Trumbull County 4-H is a multi-bass and year-round program. We currently support 25 traditional 4-H clubs, three school enrichment programs, including Real Money Real World, a financial literacy program, Add a 101, and Chick-fil-A. We also provide resident camping programs at Camp Whitewood, Step Day Camp, special interest groups, including our team-led traffic safety educational programs, including Smash and Carte. Every year, we work to expand our reach, making sure 4-H is accessible to youth across Trumbull County, from urban neighborhoods to rural communities. On the inside page of the pamphlet you receive, you'll find an overview of Trumbull County 4-H's reach and project distribution, as well as a snapshot of our broader impact across Ohio. The success of 4-H relies on the dedication of our volunteers, our program partners, and the support of leaders like you. We are deeply thankful for the talented adult mentors, the support of the Commissioners, and the community organizations who champion our cause year after year. By supporting the 4-H way, you are helping youth ages five to eighteen learn essential life skills. These include, but are not limited to, leadership development, responsibility and time management, communication and public speaking, teamwork and fortitude shift, civic engagement, and service. Here in Trumbull County, 4-H plants seeds of curiosity, nurtures them with education, and watches them grow into capable, competent leaders. It doesn't just change individual lives, it strengthens the very fabric of our community. Let's continue to champion the next generation with our heads for clear thinking, hearts for greater loyalty, hands for larger service, and health for better living as we move toward a future filled with hope, connection, and service. Thank you for your continued support of Trumbull County 4-H. Together, we are building something truly lasting. I have 11 4-H members with me today who are very passionate about 4-H. I hope that you may get to see a glimpse of the impact 4-H has made in their lives and how it has inspired them. I would like to introduce them at this time, or I will let them introduce themselves. If we can just line up in front of the stage here. Are ready to follow. So these individuals are going to introduce themselves by name, age, and club, or how they participate in 4-H.
My name is Parker Chambers. I'm 18 years old, and I've participated in 4-H through Kent County.
Hello, I am Isabella Bailey. I'm 16 years old, and I am a member of Trumbull Spash Shepherds with the Community.
Hi, I'm Kathy Gracie. I'm 16 years old, and I participate in 4-H through my friends.
Hi, my name is Brilliant Rice, and I'm 14 years old, and I'm part of the Happy Hands 4-H Club.
My name is Ethan Flava, and I'm 16 years old, and I forget what. Straightforward Pioneer Company.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Bettin. I'm 16 years old, and I'm from D.C. Heritage.
Hello, my name is Blake Miller. I'm 11 years old, and I'm part of the Happy Hands, the Declusion 4-H Club.
Hi, my name is Jessica Fisher. I'm a local resident and a part of the community.
Hi, my name is Addison Price. I'm nine years old, and I'm a president of Trumbull County Wild and Wilderness.
My name is Madison Seepleton. I'm 12 years old, and I'm a part of Trumbull County, the Community and the Hall.
Hello, I'm Maece Ryan. I'm 18 years old, and I'm part of Happy Hands 4-H Club.
I'd now like to call upon Isabella Bailey, who would like to express things on behalf of the 4-H members. On behalf of all Trumbull County 4-Hers, I would like to thank you for not only your continued support of our program and our senior chair, but also for allowing us to be a part of your meeting today. We cannot thank you enough. Thanks, Isabella. Now I'd like to call upon Ethan Flava, who will lead us in the 4-H pledge. If you're not familiar with the 4-H pledge, it is in your program. I encourage you to stay with us.
Please rise for the 4-H pledge.
I think it's a larger service by health, the better living, by love, by creating, by the country and not world.
Thank you, Ethan. We would now like to present a small gift to the Commissioners and staff in appreciation. If you'd like to come up.
Thank you.
Please accept that as a small token of our business. At this time, some of our 4-H members would like to share a short speech with you this morning. We're going to go in alphabetical order. I'd like to call first Isabella Bailey.
Good morning. Like I said before, I am Isabella Bailey. I'm 16 years old and a member of Kent City, where I am the president and Trumbull Spash Shepherds, where a year prior I was a certain secretary. I have been in 4-H for eight years. I've completed projects ranging from shelling clubland to making my own bread. 4-H means so much to me. It means the memories, the friendships, and the lessons I have learned. From how to cook lamb to how to show a chicken, to how to sew a hen, to how to work a drill, to how a girl is safe. I couldn't thank 4-H enough for the lessons I've learned, the memories I've gained. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you, Isabella. Next, I'd like to call upon Caitlin Bettin, who is also our 2025 4-H queen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Bettin. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a member of the Community Heritage. This is my eighth year in 4-H. I've shown rabbits, goats, fancy market chickens, and pigeons. I've also done sewing in our projects, both which have led me to represent Trumbull County at the Ohio State Fair. I have placed, I've also placed in top 20 someone of my sewing craft. I take pride in showing my animals and making the best bet. Any chance I get to work someone, all my animals, I take it. If I don't know the answer, I will find it for you. 4-H has given me the confidence in public speaking and taught me that determination and dedication pay off. Due to these newly learned skills, I'm able to have confidence in speaking in front of an audience. The reason I'm able to present today is due to the encouragement of the 4-H community and always pushing me to make the best bet. I've also been able to use these skills in schools and preparing for college since I was a teenager in high school. These are only a few skills I learned from 4-H and strive to learn more. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have Parker Chambers.
Good morning. My name is Parker Chambers. I'm 18 years old, and I've been participating in Camp Whitewood for the past six years, this year being my final year as a counselor. I had an amazing experience my first two years as the camper. I had an impact on me that I wanted to leave on other campers as well. So I've been coming back for four years and providing a similar experience. This year was amazing to see how many of my campers wanted to be counselors as well. I kept the cycle continuing, and I had a very fun time at camp. It felt like a family that you could share a special experience with, which was rare, but enlightening as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Daisy Parker. He also received the 2025 Returning Counselor Award at camp, of the Rockstar Movement. Next, we'll have Mrs. Blake Miller.
My name is Elizabeth. I'm 11 years old, and I'm a candidate for the 4-H Youth Club, the Happy Hands 4-H Club. Teacher of the fair, I will show and sell fierce and vivid displays. Today, I'm here to talk about the ways 4-H has impacted my life so far. The most important thing for 4-H has taught me are responsibility, patience, compassion, compassion is my animal. I have learned a lot of compassion, compassion is my animal. For showing my animals, I have learned a lot about compassion, so the animal is an ally to take care of the things. I have learned that how much effort I put in my project, how much I will be there in the long term. I've done lucky now, because I've got a gas station, Trumbull County Fair, and the Ohio State Fair. My success would not be possible if I did not put as much effort into it, and I'm not in the process of that. Showing my animals has also taught me a lot about patience. To show anyone who's acting as a lot of patience, there should be a scenario. They take a long time for them to understand what we are trying to do, that we do. It also takes a lot of time, patience, time to see resolve, which I'm finally showing my animals, because there's been a lot of confidence. You've got to have that. In the rain, you have to have a lot of confidence when showing your animals, they can tell when you did them. While you are having a lot of. That's why you have to, this is why you have to have a lot of confidence in them. Outside of the rain, I have made a lot of confidence in talking about my new business. When I talk to them, I tell them about my animals and what I will be telling them there. This has helped me be more comfortable and confident about talking to me. So I am grateful for the lessons that 4-H has taught me so far, and thankful that we are in 4-H.
Thank you, Blake. Next, we'll have Addison Price.
Hi, I'm Addison Price. I'm nine years old. This is my first year trying out. I am in the Trumbull County 4-H Wild Wilderness Club. When I first caught my rabbits, I was very excited, and I loved working with them growing up. As I work with my rabbits, I am seen gross and improved. I love taking care, I love taking care of my rabbits daily. My two rabbits, yes, there, are definitely new to me. I wanted to do 4-H and show rabbits and seeing a little girl. Last year, I was in, I was a program, and now I'm showing you and talking about rabbits and my mother. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. And last, we'll have Addison Seepleton.
Hello, my name is Addison Price, and I live in Howard, Ohio. I am a part of Trumbull County, the community, and the community. Those are called two, three. I spend treasure from the club, and I now help you base your. I have learned so much through it. I have learned how to be a leader, good role, and wasn't having problems, and they probably hear good things. As a treasurer, I have learned on the way with you to help the council. My local council helped me achieve this place for a year and a half last year. This is my first year, general student, and I have learned a couple of needs. How to get injunctions in the front of the spirit. Yeah. I'm also an assembly member, too. Being new friends, they're having so much fun, second. I appreciate all the Trumbull County Commissioners to support 4-H, so this program. And Caitlin, you can have a proper case, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. In conclusion, thank you, Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner Bernard, and Commissioner Hernandez and staff for your continued support of our program. We will continue to encompass the 4-H motto to make the mess better in Trumbull County. Thank you again.
Give another round of applause for the 4-H employees. On behalf of the Commissioners, thank you very much for this, everyone. These could very well be your next Trumbull County Commissioners. So I would listen to them, they speak very well. Not necessarily have to listen, but. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we please continue? Thank you for hearing.
Item number two of the two adopt the resolution, congratulating and honoring Private First Class Kenneth J. David for receiving Medal of Honor presented by former President Joe Biden on January 3rd, 2025, in addition to his many other honors and awards for his service of bravery. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins Kent's family, friends, and fellow veterans commemorating this special occasion. The Commissioners sincerely thank Kent for his faithful military service and bravery beyond policy nature, that are keeping with the highest traditions of the United States Military Service.
Don't get down, bro. I'll check that motion. Yes.
You're the lawyer.
Yes. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, and even the 4-H kids that are still out there, you're about to meet a real American hero here. And we, as the Trumbull County Commissioners, have a resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners honoring Kenneth J. David, United States Army Medal of Honor recipient. Whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proudly recognizes the outstanding contributions that have been made by Private First Class Kenneth J. David for his service to his country, specifically on May 7th, 1970, during the Vietnam War. And whereas, Kent was born on January 21st, 1950, growing up in Girard, Ohio, where he was active in Boy Scouts, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and was a 68 graduate of Girard High School. He was then drafted and entered the Army in August of 1969, received basic training at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, then advanced training at Fort Polk, Louisiana. He was deployed to South Vietnam in January 1970, joining Company D, 1st Battalion, 506th Infantry Regiment, 101st Airborne Division. Whereas, Kent's company came under intense attack by large hostile force that mortally wounded the company's platoon leader and resulted in numerous other casualties. And without hesitation, Kent handed his radio to his platoon sergeant and moved forward to the defensive perimeter, unleashing a barrage of automatic weapon fire on the enemy, and without regard for his own life, moved to position outside the perimeter while continuing to engage the enemy. Whereas Kent, although wounded by an exploding statue charge and running perilously low on ammunition, tossed hand grenades towards the attackers to effectively counter the fire, continuing to draw enemy fire away from the incoming medevac helicopters, allowing its wounded to be safely evacuated, even carrying a wounded comrade to a sheltered position. His actions are credited with saving 13 lives. Those seven members of his company perished in the engagement. And after being wounded in action on May 7th. And after being wounded in action on May seventh, nineteen seventy, in Fire Support Base Maureen, he was moved to Valley Court's General Hospital, Pennsylvania. In light of his actions, he was awarded the Distinguished Service Cross. And whereas, on January third, twenty twenty five, President Joe Biden upgraded Ken's Distinguished Service Cross to the Medal of Honor. Some of his many other awards received were the Purple Heart, with the first Oakley Cluster Air Medal, the Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Medal, the Vietnam Campaign Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal with two bronze stars, the Combat Infantry Badge, the Republic of Vietnam Civil Actions Honor Medal, the First Class Unit Citation Badge, Republic of Vietnam Gallantry Cross with Pulp Unit Citation Badge, Expert Marchsmanship Badge. And whereas in twenty ten, he was inducted in the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for valor and military bravery, among many other post military awards and honors. He was recognized by Trouble County as a Community Star in twenty twenty three and recently received the dedicated marker Kenneth J. David Medal of Honor Boulevard located on Pittsburgh Street in the city of Gerard, Ohio. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trouble County Commissioners hereby honors and congratulates Private First Class Kenneth David's suspicious gallantry, extraordinary heroism, and intrapenit at the risk of his life, above and beyond the call of duty, are in keeping with the highest tradition of the military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. Ladies and gentlemen, American hero Kenneth David.
I think he would. Good morning, everybody. I just said I could talk for thirty minutes. Morning, county commissioners, clerk, news media, trouble county employees. I see we got two sheriffs here, boys, girls, friends, neighbors, and third goes. Sit on for me to be here today. And I just want to share a special story. It's not a story about calling for heroes. It's a true story about courage, friendship, and remembering the people who served our country. I was a soldier a long time ago. I served in the United States Army during the Vietnam War with hundred first airborne air assault. I know it was still helpful. My teammates say Satan and communicate with Captain during missions. Being out with my dependent fieldman. And we were in great age of that. I had to make a tough choice. Hand it off the radio, sorry, and move forward. Even though I'm scared that I wanted to protect my home soldiers. I did not think I was doing it in special. I just did what I believed was right of the training that I received. Now to give another chance of warning, but I was injured in Vietnam on May seventh. When we were over there, we all thought we could die. But some of us failed, and I was one of them. I'm continuing at the hospital and military. My goal was to help other centers get their benefits that they earned. And not look to be hurt and hardships that I went through to get my benefits. On all these nights, twenty forty four, fourth Thursday, and evening, I received a phone call from the President of the United States, President Joe Biden. On my personal cell phone, he told me I was received a Medal of Honor, eyes of war, that soldiers can receive. No surprise, no comment. I did not do the things in Vietnam for a medal. I did it for the people I cared about. Now, on January third, twenty twenty five, or this year, I went to the White House where the President placed the Medal of Honor around my neck. It was one of the most meaningful moments of my life. But there was only two days, six, one, living Medal of Honor. And the day after the Medal of Honor ceremony, I was honored again. This time at a ceremony of the Hall of Heroes in the Pentagon. This is the place where all the names of every Medal of Honor recipient is on the wall. I also gave a speech that day, not just about me, but about the men I served with, the real heroes of the ones who gave everything. Not long after, I returned to watch Tennessee A march for Medal of Honor Day. They can remove the courage of all who received this award. I was again honored to meet the new President, President Donald Trump. And to be so happy by other Medal of Honor recipients. We shared stories, remembered the fallen, encouraged others to live lives of courage, service, and kindness. And here's what I've learned. Bravery is not about being fearless. It's about doing the right thing, even when you are afraid. You don't have to be a soldier to be a hero. Kindness, courage, helping others face the world in a better place, one choice in the common. Medal of Honor is not just about one person. It's about honoring all the brave men and women who served and sacrificed. But I accept that on behalf of my comrades. Those were the brave soldiers they served with, especially the ones you don't come home. What's not come home? For my two, Corporal Robin Purford, H one two. PFC Peter Coe, H one. Final time, first one to have for my selection. H one one. Corporal Martin Gonzalez, H one. Sergeant Lloyd Jackson, level two. Corporal Robert Low Henry, twenty one. Sergeant Joseph Burton, H one five. They're on canal, river, west, lines one twenty one, one twenty. The weird they have veterans of water war we see. They're dating, won't be anything to you, but they are and will always be my brothers from the jungle of South Vietnam. Now, in that vicinity, KIA's, there were four different cultures. But we had a saying. We all planted weed. Eighteen of us are over on that night, but it weren't fifteen. We had seven KIA's and some others that were wounded, and we all received Purple Hearts. There were four others that were someone who not be with you. And I just did what I had to do to protect the ones who still alive. Now, all the children, mountains of law, Shaw Alley, for forty-five days at a time. We carry no raincoats, no tents, no air mattresses. Because it sounded bad when it rained, it sounded like a crime. No more to find out, but eighteen in with me, am I able to? We knew the shadow looked like the way they walked, smell, down to their roots. We were in a jungle, in a war, all alone, except for the north bit of me. For the brother. Now I can live my life by the arms of which is duty, integrity, and personal courage. Thank you for sharing some stories. I will always wear this medal to honor the people I stood beside. And I will always remember the ones who do not come home and have the chance to get old and be brave like me. And I believe that every one of you can be a person who shows courage, passion, and love to each other. You don't need a medal to be a hero. You just need a heart that's willing to help. I will do remember. I, Kenneth J. David, salute you for duty, honor.
Commissioners, I'd like to say too, Kevin, thank you so much for your service. We're honored to be representing Trouble County so well. And everywhere you go, you talk, you talk about your hometown, where you're from. And there are others like you in this county, and I want to. One and a half, Commissioner Tony Bernard, is a Vietnam veteran. Thank you, Tony, for your service. Honored to serve with you here on this board. I see a gentleman over there with a Vietnam veteran, and thank you. And we have board members from our veteran services as well as here, Delgado, and all of our veterans. Thank you so much.
I must say that this is an honor to be able to give out these resolutions. And we do have another resolution, Madam Clerk, if you would please continue.
I have number three, school adopter resolution, celebration of the one hundred and seventy ninth year of the Trouble County Fair. Longstanding objective of the fair is to promote and encourage agriculture, agriculture, education, and science, art, and other interests to showcase them in any clear week. Many organizations and businesses worked together to showcase the positive side of the town.
Question to approve.
A second on motion? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Barry, then Kirsten and the staff. Resolution by the Board of Trouble County Commissioners, celebrating the one hundred and seventy ninth year of the Trouble County Fair. Welcome to the jungle. Barry, can you give me that screen? Give up my hand. I said along something. Whereas it is with great pride that the Board of Trouble County Commissioners celebrates the one hundred and seventy ninth year of the Trouble County Fair, bringing families together. And whereas the longstanding objective of the Trouble County Fair is to display a sense of community through agriculture, industry, science, and art. And whereas the Trouble County Fair is also an exciting learning opportunity for our county's future leaders from underage farm bureau, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. And whereas, since nineteen seventy, the Trouble County Fair has showcased the annual Parade of Colors with its pageantry and the cooperative efforts of the Alps, BFW groups, elected officials, and fair board directors. The parade is a tribute to the armed forces and allows Trouble County's various youth groups to participate in the salute to those who serve. And whereas the agricultural community, including Trouble County Farm Bureau, Trouble County Soil and Water Conservation District, Trouble Food and Agriculture Committee, and Trouble County Ohio State University Extension, through the history of the fair, always has given support both financial contributions and educational displays in promoting this county's number one business, which is agriculture. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trouble County Commissioners commends the Trouble County Fair Directors, Junior Fair, advisors, elected officials, county workers, local fire and police stations for all the hard work that goes into making Fair Week a memorable and safe experience for families to come and enjoy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Trouble County Commissioners recognize the value of this county's agriculture and acknowledge the hard work and dedication put forward by the directors of the Trouble County Agricultural Society and the support shown by the community. We wish the Trouble County Fair continued success and look forward to celebrating for many years to follow by the Board of Trouble County Commissioners, Barry Pearson. Can we give him a round of applause, everyone? These are two very hard, 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 working individuals, including their staff.
We put through my McDonald, the model staff on McDonald Park. Team my God, it's amazing to be the president of these guys. They want to think this works. What you wouldn't say before you get them. That's why we do it for you to stay in hot days of year, seven, twenty four. That don't work your hard or the wrong way.
I'm honored to be in charge of such a great team and represent the fair and fair board. We hope you all have a great time. Thank you to the commissioners, Kansas President, for everything he's done for us. Look forward to continue working with you. Thank you, Erin. I forgot the office.
Thank you, Kirsten. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone who's involved with the Trouble County Fair to make this a successful fair. And we know it's not going to rain, Barry. No rain.
No, all no dinner in the middle of the night, right? Is there any wood? Before we get to the next item, please. We have all of our Trouble County employees, department heads, like an official stand up for a second. We're talking about teams. We've got a lot of our team out there, and they help in many, many ways to make the exact goal. So we're always helping with the ground, building permits, doing water out here, anything we need, emergency. The band vehicle, sheriffs, the engineers, sanders, there's the whole staff. Makes this possible. Well, thank you. Also, I want to point out too, we do have our county reporters on things with us. Thank you, Dawn, for being here. We have David Collins, our state representative, been close helpful with the fair. And we have Eric for Congressman Dave Joyce's office, Representative David. So thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Before we go any further, I do want to mention that we want to recognize. Before we go any further, I do want to mention that we want to recognize Barry Brown and the staff here who are inviting Fairhaven attendees here today. The Fair Board has graciously provided all food, all comps, all free admission. It's an entire day's event for the attendees here from Fairhaven. We'd also like to thank Cracker Jack Clown, the Family Fund Circus, he's from the Family Fund Circus, who will be working with all the Fairhaven attendees today. So can we give Fairhaven a round of applause for their independence today? Thank you again, Barry, Kirsten, and the staff for putting this together. Wonderful. Okay, Madam Clerk, your turn.
Item number four is to approve the release of the medical records of the one shot of the day of July 1st, 2025. The regular order, July 7, 2025, and stuff to approve the media recordings of the media as the official meeting.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yes. Yes.
Item number five is to approve the bill.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yes.
Item number six is to approve additional per per diem.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve transfer of per per diem.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Item number eight is to approve the earning of the statutory time by Trumbull County employees to go outside the work area to serve the public by working. The Commissioners do during the Trumbull County Fair as well as Commissioners do during the 2025 festival season.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to rescind the place on file for May 2025 monthly financial report for the Trumbull County Torres and Bureau.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item number 10 is to authorize payment of $4,732.34 to the Ohio Workforce Association for renewal of annual fees. The Ohio Workforce, Citizens Gang, and the State Workforce, directors of the organization of the Trumbull County.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item number 11 is to adopt the resolution to recommend that the State Emergency Response Commission appoint slash reappoint members of the Trumbull County Board of Independence Committee as submitted for the term commencing August 13, 2025, and ending August 12, 2027, and to authorize Rick Fernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to expedite appointment application.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item number 12 is to confer with the county engineer to close the ball many roadways as listed. East Locust Street in the city of Gerard, and that's for Mount Carmel basketball high road presentation on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Turner South Road in Southern Township for fall replacement, Monday, July 7, 2025, and then Friday, July 17, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes. Yes.
Item 14 is to authorize the purchase of one new backer model 2100I combination sewer cleaner mower on a brake liner, the 114ST single axle cab chassis from A&amp;H Equipment under sewer wall purchasing program contract 101221BTR. For the total purchase price of $499,950, said purchase will be leased locally through Honeyman Bank, where the sixth year term at 4.47% interest.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item 14 is to approve change order number one and final as submitted by Aprilia Home Company, for construction of the TRU Townsfolk Parkway, 222, Council Drive, Arlington, 16 Bridge, and placement project, project ID 11450. Change order number one is in the amount of $2,509.52, revising the total contract amount to $480,559.52. Change order number one is necessary to adjust the contract to the final implementation of the project.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yeah.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yes.
Item 15 is to approve change order number one and final estimated by thousand construction Inc. for the construction of the TRU Tinsman sidewalk space cover project, project ID 168 845. Change order number one is in the amount of $19,256, revising the total contract amount to $234,029.52. Change order number one is necessary to adjust the contract to reflect the final quantity of the project.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yes.
Item 16 is to confer with county engineer to grant a special volume permit to alternate the oil, day roads, transportation services.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Item 17 is to confer with county engineer to grant a special volume permit to move rolling equipment requested by the company listed, bridges, towing, and service.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item 18 is to confer with county engineer to grant the right of insurance requested by the company residents listed, duty verdict to close the village energy cooperative association, and Bonor Excavating.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item 19 is to receive a place on file for the activities reported from the Trumbull County Dog Pound month of June 2025.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yes. Yes, and with discussion, Commissioners, I really believe that we're going to need to look into the situation in the county with the dog pound. I've been receiving a lot of, a lot of calls, a lot of text messages, emails. Now, Healthy Hearts and Paws have been gracious enough to provide what they have, and he's overwhelmed, Jason is overwhelmed there. We have discussed in the past, 911 tends to reach out to Jason rather than the pound. So we, we want to make sure that we do get across to 911, that we do have a trouble county dog, and they do need to reach out to the dog ward and to release all the predator that Healthy Hearts and Paws is experiencing. We will be capital expenditure projects. I really believe that this is one that we really, 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 you know, look into for our canine friends, also, you know, cats. It's become a big issue in Trumbull County. So on behalf of the Commissioners, just to let you know that, you know, we will be in discussion concerning these issues, and that we really do need to pay attention and release a lot of the burden of the Healthy Hearts and Paws through the pound. And we'd like to make sure that 911 does reach out to the dog pound as well as Jason and Healthy Hearts. I don't know if you have any comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, Commissioner, the easiest way we can immediately relieve the pressure is we need good people to adopt some of these dogs. Jason and the bunch of dogs there, Healthy Hearts and Paws, we have dogs in our dog pound. If you've been thinking about having a friend in the family or a good family member, now would be a great time. With the heat that's out there right now, there are lots of dogs out there that need love, that need a good home, that need someone that's going to responsibly take care of them. And if we can get these dogs into a home, you know, house, outside of this situation we have, that would alleviate a lot of the pressure from the distress and anxiety of all these dogs being overcrowded right now. So if you were thinking about it, if you were contemplating it, please assist us, adopt some of these dogs. There are dogs out there just waiting for love, waiting for a good home. If you can provide that, if you've been tossing it around, if you've got a child, nothing better than to raise a child with his own best friend. I know I had a dog when I was probably five, and my greatest memory is growing up, or me and my best friend Samantha growing up. So do that for your kid. Everyone wants these desired dogs, wants to spend a ton of money. There are some great dogs to be a best friend for you, waiting for you right now for the dog pound and some of these other places. Please get out there and adopt them.
Commissioner, any comments?
Hopefully, we get some good news in September, and address that issue. So I have, I have two dogs myself. You go home after a home day, I stay at the board, but that's, so I raise a bunch of dogs. I need a dog, a little healthy horse, and maybe a dog one, you know. I just let the people know, hopefully in September, they start adjusting some of these federal issues.
Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 20 is to approve open that lease agreement with Alco Town for a recondition of 1825 C, by tenement tradition share, and we face her for the juvenile dusty standard in the amount of $7,299, payments of 1,000,361, with all name links and years in the deal.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Item 21 is to approve, Commissioner, right in the beginning, says that item number 25, dated 27, 2025, to approve to include signs submitted and written, we know, from the data, from LLC, to perform account service, in the amount of $13,200, get reimbursed starting July 1, 2025, in 2026, is a continuation of services divided by the firm to the county. Amendment is necessary to change the non-internal language of the facility, or the discount in no terms, allocated or paying, hold time front 5,000, to the general, so maybe tire possibly agree, no 29 in LLC.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
One, two, is to approve submitted, satisfied, wanted, to be all LLC, land, property, company. The company has satisfied all terms and conditions for the 125,000, involving mortgage loan granted in November 2011 on top of the in Greatville Township.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Yes, if you're one of my department heads, give me one, someone please, for Barry. Thanks, Barry.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Item 23 is to approve submitted, only as a sound of the county, or the LLC, land advancement company, we can think this guy's private alternative condition is for the 125,000, free mortgage fund, mortgage loan granted in November 2011 on property in Greatville Township.
Motion to approve. I'll say.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yes.
Item 24 is to approve personnel action, who we want to grant to the owner of the position of operator cabinet, February 8, 7, year 65, 82 per hour to the facility operator, February 27, year 74 cents per hour, in Trumbull County standing, standing on Monday, August 11, 2025.
Motion to approve. I'll say.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Office, evidence for construction, by Justin and Associates, in the amount of $3,125.
Motion to approve. I'll say that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Item 27 is to approve deployed funds, utilized in upgrading soda body scanner, which is used to hold back contraband in Long Island Jail. Opioid crisis, significant, active correctional facilities, revealing time, this time, this time, this time, this time, security, the non-battle decision with the sheriff's office and purpose is allocated, not in 20,000 dollars, for the opioid settlement funds to upgrade current center body scanner. The current standard is located in the receiving area of the Trumbull County Jail, has not been upgraded since 2017. On average, the jail staff begins approximately 3,000 body scans per year, the condition of curative is beyond repair, and the upgrade is leaving immediately.
Motion to approve. I'll say. Yeah. Yes. Yes, with some discussion, Commissioners, I just want to let the public know about what this is. It's a category three recovery, three B criminal justice system. This is a body scanner that is pretty much out of, it going out of commission, and without an upgrade, it will be out of commission, and it costs a lot of money to replace. So this $92,000 comes from an opioid settlement that the county, this money's not coming from a general fund, and it will update the full body scanner. It will greatly enhance the jail's ability to detect contraband in and on or inside a person. It will serve as a deterrent to those attempting to smuggle substances into the facility. It will reduce the incidence of overdoses and drug-related incidents behind bars, and support a safer and more stable environment conducive to recovery and rehabilitation. Just, Commissioners, want to let the public know that this is something that is warranted out of the opioid settlement. There are certain conditions that you need to meet, this is one of them, and I just want to know that our taxpayers, everybody know that. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Oh, wait a second, you were finished. Let, let's give our clerk a round of applause for all the, I also wanted to recognize Christie, our staff, all of our staff at the Trumbull County Commissioners, often who work very hard. It's, it's, it's unseen by you, but without our staff, the Commissioners would be in some major trouble. We're going to move to public comment. If anybody here has a comment, something that's concerning you, that you'd like to bring forth to the Commissioners, this is your time to come forward, give us your